I think you can all sit down and stand up. Please rise and say please believe this.
We are the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job. We'll move on to the spotlight school JB Stevens Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us a little bit of time tonight. As most of you know, I'm Amy Sutton, I'm the principal JB Stevens. And tonight, we have brought some of our kindergarten students tonight, or today, and they're going to show off some of their early reading skills, more specifically their phonemic awareness. As the board might recall, I was up here in front of you a few months ago talking through our school improvement plans at JB Stevens. We do have two that are around reading, so we're looking to increase our I-Learn scores by fifteen percent and then also get to that ninety-five percent proficiency in I-Read Three. I also shared with you that a specific strategy we're going to be using is really focusing on some science-based research on how students best learn those foundational reading skills. So when I knew it was my turn to be up here tonight, I thought, why not show the board exactly what I was talking about? So I'm going to introduce you to my instructional coach. This is Tina Johnston. She's been great in helping move our teachers and grow our teachers with new kind of reading strategies. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Trapp and the kids so you can kind of see what we're doing in classrooms.
Hi. So our staff has been researching, exploring, and learning about the science of reading and its impact on early literacy development. The science of reading is a body of research that investigates how children learn to read and what instructional approaches are most effective. The five pillars of reading instruction include phonemic and phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Tonight, you're going to have an opportunity to see just a small portion of reading instruction in action. Mrs. Trapp and her kindergarten teachers will be modeling a daily phonemic awareness lesson. Phonemic awareness is the ability to hear and manipulate individual sounds or phonemes in spoken words. Today, we will watch a lesson designed to enhance our students' phonemic awareness, setting them on the path to becoming confident readers. Now, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention to the kindergartners. You guys ready? Nice, strong voice. Okay, not yelling, but loud. Okay, here we go. All right, let's start with rhyming words. Ready? Give me a color word that rhymes with glink. Give me a color word that rhymes with circle. Give me a color word that rhymes with zello. Give me a color word that rhymes with kindigo. Give me a color word that rhymes with fleen. And give me a color word that rhymes with violet. What sound do you hear at the beginning of itchy? What sound do you hear at the beginning of appetite? What sound do you hear at the beginning of join? What sound do you hear at the beginning of move? What sound do you hear at the beginning of wild? And what sound do you hear at the beginning of push? Chompers. Ig. Om. R-ock. Cave. N-ape. D-ome. M-ess. B-ik. K-ut. And r-ipe. Good job. Let's do ending sounds. Punch them out. Ready? Dress. Smile. Grove. And breeze. Chompers again, please. You chomp it this time. Nope. Tube. Jack. Pipe. Box. Leave. Rip. Woke. Fun. And bead. Your word is ed. Add b. Your word is ed. Add s. Ed. Add u. Ed. Add r. Ed. Add t. Your word is map. Say it without m. Bit. Say it without b. Fog. Say it without f. Gut. Say it without g. And pen. Say it without p. Good job. All right, your word is nap. Change n to s. Sap. Change s to o. Lap. Change o to m. Map. Change m to t. And tab. Change t to n. Letter is F, sound is f. Letter is V, sound is v. Letter is N, sound is n. Letter is X, sound is x. Letter is H, sound is h. Letter is R, sound is r. Letter is U, sound is u. Letter is M, sound is m. Letter is B, sound is b. Letter is Y, sound is y. Letter is S, sound is s. Letter is W, sound is w. Letter is J, sound is j. Letter is Q, sound is q. Letter is E, sound is e. Letter is L, sound is l. Letter is D, sound is d. Letter is O, sound is o. Letter is A, sound is a. Letter is P, sound is p. Letter is G, sound is g. Letter is Z, sound is z. Letter is K, sound is k. Letter is C, sound is c. Letter is T, sound is t. Letter is I, sound is i. Let's do our nursery rhyming together. Ready? Humpty Dumpty sat on a wall. Humpty Dumpty had a great fall. All the king's horses and all the king's men couldn't put Humpty together again. All right, let's do our sentences. Ready? My class is the best class. My class is the best class. I have friends here. I have friends here. Do you try your best? Do you try your best? Our teacher is so proud of us. Our teacher is so proud of us. School is fun. I can count to ten. I can count to ten. I can tie my shoes. I can tie my shoes. Will this be a great day? Will this be a great day? They like when we have to use two fingers. That's all. Good job, guys.
So good. Thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time. I know that you guys can always get into our classroom, so I wanted to bring a JB Stevens kindergarten classroom to you and that way you could see all the great work that we are doing and helping to instill those critical early reading foundations and skills in our kids. Hey, guys, I bet your parents would love to get a picture of you in front of the school board, so let's have a photo op, okay? Can everybody stand real quick and scooch together? Find your parents out there. Find your parents. This is a very proud moment, guys. Cameras away. Let me get everybody. See everybody? You see everybody now? How's that look?
Mrs. Trapp in the picture.
Oh, Mrs. Trapp. Cheese! All right, guys, good job.
To the Lilly Endowment Scholarship.
Turn it over to Mrs. Vale, a very familiar face joining us as a representative of the community foundation.
Good evening. I am Anne Vale, representing the Community Foundation of Hancock County Education Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize this year's two Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship finalists from Greenfield Central High School. The Community Foundation of Hancock County celebrates thirty-one years of service this year and stewards endowed funds that generate income in the form of grants and scholarships. Since its inception in nineteen ninety-two, the foundation has granted more than twenty-three million dollars. The foundation is privileged to count the administration of the Lilly Endowment Community Scholarship as part of its rich heritage. Each year, the foundation applies for the opportunity to recommend two graduating students to Lilly Endowment for a full four-year tuition scholarship award. Eligible applicants must be in the top fifteen percent of their graduating class and plan to pursue a bachelor's degree to be completed in four years at any accredited Indiana public or private college or university. Student applications are submitted online and reviewed blindly by third-party professional readers represented by out-of-county community foundation personnel or education professionals. The third-party reviewers select eight finalists, two from each of the four county public high schools, who best meet the scholarship criteria. Community service is the primary criterion for qualification. Financial need is not a consideration for the Lilly Endowment Hancock County Community Scholarship. The eight finalists are then interviewed by a volunteer committee identified by the Community Foundation of Hancock County, all of whom adhere to a strict conflict of interest policy. This committee has the very difficult task of selecting two students from the eight finalists, all very talented, and submitting their recommendation to Lilly Endowment for approval. Pending approval, the awards will be announced in December. At this time, on behalf of the Community Foundation of Hancock County, it's my privilege to introduce you to Greenfield Central's Lilly Endowment finalists, and we want to present them with a certificate and a small token of admiration from the community foundation. So if you will, please help me congratulate Emmy Willis. Will you come on up? And Lenia Walker. I want to thank you, and at this time, Mr. Carey is going to share with you why we are so proud of Emmy and Lenia.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Vale. As you can imagine, it's a hard decision to pick these two from a wonderful senior class, but these two ladies certainly stood out. And when I asked them to send me their list of accomplishments so that I could say something about them tonight, they were quite lengthy. And so to try and narrow those down, I've just picked a few things. We'll start with Emmy. Again, both girls involved in a lot of different activities. Emmy is involved in our drama club. She is also a member of the Legacy Show Choir. She is also in our radio/TV department as well. She is going to be going to either Butler or Hanover to study forensic psychology. So we're very proud of Emmy. And then for Lenia, she is involved in our marching band, also involved in several of our honor societies, our National Honor Society and our Spanish Honor Society. She's going to be going to DePaul to study pre-med. So we're very proud of these two. We wish them the best of luck and want to thank you for letting us honor you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll move right on to any public comments this evening?
I'd ask in advance, and no one signed up.
Move right on to the matters of the board. Two team matters. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting? October the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, the executive session, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and special session, October the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the matters as presented from October twenty-third, executive session on that same date, and special session on October twenty-seventh?
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. On two claims, Mr. Day.
Yeah, senior packet this evening are the regular claims, the payroll claims, and also a construction claim for this month. I'm happy to answer any questions. I ask the board to approve the claims as presented.
No comments or questions. Can I get a motion to approve the claim docket as presented?
I move that we approve the claims docket as presented.
Second.
I'll second.
On favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say aye. Onto old and unfinished business, financial matters, Mr. Day.
Yes, and you will find the nearly final October reports for the Education Operations Fund in your packet. I have updated the education fund to be more consistent with our EDM revenue. I've updated the November education fund expenditures to account for the retro payments in the CBA settlement that happened on November tenth. Our cash balances continue to track the projections. You may note on operations side, I've added an extra seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in revenue to account for the reimbursement from the GO bond that did sell today. I got that information. We sold it at four-point-six-seven percent. Our tax rate will stay at or below our fifty-five-point-two-cent target, and we continue to have space in the future for projects as they come in front of us and are need. Our next big drop, well, our tax rate will drop a little bit in projections for next year, but our next big drop is going to happen in twenty-twenty-six. So.
Mr. Day, I believe that was about a point lower than we expected.
It was a percentage point lower than the original estimates, so. So it's good. As we've discussed in the past, you know, higher interest rates are really great for our interest earnings revenue and really poor for our borrowing efforts. We'll take our lumps on one side, but overall, this is a very good sale for us today. Happy to answer any questions you have about the spreadsheets included. If not, there's no action required from the board.
Yes, I have maybe random question. Maybe want some more research. Like, it looks, looking at twenty-twenty-two at the same time versus now, very steady? Is there any volatility we should anticipate in the future? Or do we think it's going to remain that steady? Does it make sense?
Yeah. And so later in the, later in the board pack, talking about volatility, you know, we're going to take up a conversation about the participating in the bond banks fuel budgeting program. That's something that we did for the first time this year. With the volatility there, that's possible in the fuel market, particularly for gasoline. That should help with some of that. Right now, we are fairly steady. We are steady in our ADM. We're steady in our expenses. We did commit to a very positive raise for our teachers. And so you'll start to see that filter into twenty-twenty-four as I present projections for the education fund. But on the operations fund side, I think our goal next year is actually to start tapering off some of our expenditures. This moment in time, you know, the board willing and correct don't rise. You know, we continue to be steady in our expectations. You know, obviously, lots of outside factors can affect that. You know, economic condition, country, stuff like that. But, you know, right now, we feel very confident about what we're doing. Thanks. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I think, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
We'll move on to instructional program report of the week.
See a number of different items here. The first page there highlights five courses that we would like to offer next year at the high school. There are surprises in there. When you take a look at the Capstone courses for the FACS course, seven-two-six-seven, and a Capstone course for radio/TV broadcasting. We've been doing that in the past. Would be adding, would there be a third course? Fourth course.
The final course.
Which, important for us with the graduation pathways, to have that Capstone piece, that would be a different one. The last one there in science, one that is very familiar with. We've had an anatomy and physiology class for a number of years. This would be moving it into an AP course for us. Certainly, I would take any questions you have about those, but if you have no questions, I would certainly recommend approval of those courses.
Courses or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve the courses as presented? That's our first three, wasn't it?
The first three. I just see if you're paying attention. First three in there. What we meant back there, December is what I meant to say. So if you wouldn't mind turning to the next page there. Last Tuesday, Election Day, we did have our second e-learning day. Just wanted to give you a summary of some of the activities we had on that day. I feel like we've done a nice job of providing a lot of professional learning opportunities for our staff that is really based on the needs that they have. We've broken that down by tiers, as well as, if you look on the next page, for preschool, special education, and for our paraprofessionals. We've offered a wide range of opportunities for our professionals to continue to grow. We just want you to have an idea of how we utilize those days. You may get some questions from the community as to why we would have three e-learning days per year. That is our opportunity to really invest into all staff. Of course, we do some professional development over the summer. We can't get all staff to participate in that for a variety of reasons. When we have these e-learning days set up in this format, it does give us that opportunity to meet the needs of all staff. If no questions about that, I want you to be aware that we did receive a grant from the Department of Education for forty-three thousand dollars to assist us with the robotics programs that we have. These funds can be used for entry fees. They also be used to purchase some of the equipment that is necessary. But I certainly want to thank our STEM teachers for bringing that to our attention and helping us to write that and helping us to secure it. Beyond that, you see that literacy is very important to us. You saw that with what Mrs. Trapp was doing with our kindergarten students. We tried to instill literacy skills in our preschool students as well in providing our families the resources they need, some things they can do at home. So you see the Greenfield Central Family Literacy Corner that has been created here in the last couple weeks. I will say that Michelle Smith, Matt Davis have been a big part of putting that together and making that available for our families. But you were encouraged to take a look at some of those resources that we're providing to our families, and we're continuing to add to that. That is for information purposes only. I will kind of spark your interest with the grants received. We're going to have more information for you next month with greater detail. But we did secure a grant about ten times that related to the science of reading implementation for four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I think I'll have those details for you next month, but we did just find that out here in the last couple of days. Just contribute to the staff that I work with for their willingness to go out and find additional resources to allow us to do good things for our staff.
Thanks everyone for that.
That's all I have for the instructional report.
We'll move right on to more policy recommendations, second reading.
Okay, now, this is a second reading. If you remember from last month, we had quite a bit of conversation about F-176 on unpaid meals, which you see in front of you would be the policy as it exists. We had some conversation last month about the differences we have in place for our K-six students versus our students grade seven through twelve. A lot of conversation about what that cost us in terms of some of that uncollected debt. We also pushed along some policies of neighboring school corporations as you had asked us to do, which would show that our current policy about having some alternative meals after a certain threshold was in line with our county peers. I think there was a threshold of ten dollars at one neighbor, twenty dollars with another, and of course, with us here, that would be beyond four meals, which would be somewhere in between that, that ten and twenty dollars. The conversation we had last month, or the five of you had, was really taking a look at the potential of changing that expectation from K-six to perhaps expanding that. So with that reminder in place, I'll turn it over to you to continue that conversation.
Now, I think I'm going to turn it to Hillary, where I spoke a little bit ago, and she has some ideas.
You know, I think some of what we heard last time among those of us on the board was just a reluctance to keep the policy that exists today in place. I know for myself, I don't want to see us doing the alternative meals going forward. That would be a piece that I absolutely want taken out. Frankly, my recommendation would be that we use the policy that we have in place for the K-through-six to be a K-through-twelve policy. I understand the reasoning that was set forth when we adopted the policy as it exists today. I am not convinced that it is serving the purpose that we intended for it to serve, which was to deter going into arrears on lunch accounts for grade seven through twelve. I'm just not seeing evidence that that is having that effect, and I think it's having detrimental effects on students of those age groups. Certainly, we heard about it happening at the junior high, and I remain unconvinced that it isn't similarly having detrimental effects on our students in the nine through twelve. So I don't know if we want to have further conversation, but I am prepared to make a motion that we alter the policy to have the K-through-six policy as it exists today expanded to apply to K-through-twelve.
Yeah, I think it's one, balancing both sides of the student impact and the staff impact, but also just watching the financial exposure. So I think something else is, I think we heard loud and clear, we need to do something. We don't want to rush into something just to do it, but we also want to track it. So I think, I don't think it's part of the motion, but we would ask Mr. Day, he's going to be tracking everything, as he always does a great job, but just keeping an eye on what the changes is. So maybe we get to May, June and say, hey, this was a great change. Let's keep it up. Or maybe there's slight tweaks. But I think we've certainly heard from Mr. Beaver, and maybe not to a certain extent in the high school, but it could very quickly, that we need to look into something now versus later. And so I think this is kind of a reasonable. We did do some due diligence. We pulled some of our neighbors, but also had some conversations, but let's make the change now, get that corrected, and then see if it's absolutely right or is there a small tweak or two to make. So I like what you presented, Hillary, and I fully support that motion.
Support as well.
You'll renew my motion. Sure. Sure, I'll formally renew my motion to expand the current K-through-six policy to apply K-through-twelve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say aye. Thank you.
Make that change, and obviously, we will monitor the impact of that, and it's something we can share with you this summer.
And I think one other question about that is, I did see one of our other neighbors had something in there about students that frequently came without money, that that would possibly be a sign of other issues. And I know when I was a teacher... And I know when I was a teacher, we're all bound to report that. I assume we already have something in place. I don't know that we need to formalize it, but I might just ask Dr. Olin to make sure that we don't need, maybe you see with Mr. Straw, to make sure we don't need some language like that, since I, I'm sure we're always monitoring that, but I thought it was interesting that a neighbor had that in.
We are always monitoring for neglect. For instance, if we see that, all school employees are mandatory reporters of that. It's, I think a great area in terms of what you would consider neglect related to lunch money piece. It was in one of the policies that we looked at, but it's not something that I've seen beyond that. Now, I will be meeting with our principals tomorrow. It's a conversation that we can, can certainly have, and reminding our staff of the obligations that they have related to neglect, if that's something that they see.
All right, now, going back, we do need to vote on the.
On the others? There were three others that you've seen for a second time. There were no changes to those either. That would include policy C-125 for legal settlement, F-325 debt management, and policy F-350 on reserve and liquidity.
We have no comments or questions on that. Can I get a motion to approve the board policies as presented?
I move that we approve the remaining board policies as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Can we go on to construction project updates, Dr. Olin?
We met in late October. I had three board, or three construction meeting minutes that were attached to that. Since it's only been three weeks, there's only been one construction meeting since then. But rest assured, there's been a lot of progress made in the last three weeks, and we've shared that with you with the pictures. I'm one who believes that a picture is worth a thousand words. So if you wouldn't mind looking at the picture there, the first, I guess it's the second page, and the first picture you're looking at, if you were standing just north of the existing gym, which is that area between the gym and the auditorium, looking out to the east, that entire first floor slab has now been poured, including those steps in the corner that will eventually take you to the stairs, that will take you to the mezzanine on the east balcony. Mr. Thompson's pulling those up for those of you in the, the audience here. That second picture, this is one that we were able to pull from Skillman's. I think they got that, those pictures for us, which would be simply the mezzanine area, the mechanical. There will be a lot of mechanical equipment there on that mezzanine between the, I guess, the auditorium and the, the auditorium. The next page, this is the first I've seen of the, the second story. I have not climbed the ladder to get up there for this, but you're seeing the second floor lobby really being framed out well with the, the metal studs being in place. And then what was even more shocking to me, you're starting to see the, the decking in place for the waterfall seating. That was taken late last week, last Thursday, I believe. Thursday or Friday?
Well, actually, that was probably taken Wednesday. I was over there Friday when we were dealing with the potential, well, the problem with the drains backing up in the pool area, and they've actually decked a big chunk of the west waterfall all the way up. And I'm definitely not advocating anybody walking up it, but you could.
No, you cannot. And then if you look at the last page, if you were to be standing on the, the stage or near that stage area, you can see that that, that structural steel in the balcony is in place. That long beam that would be above the tractor, for lack of a better term, that actually has the piece that was signed on, on the backside of that. But it is really starting to, to take shape. Mr. Day and I would be happy to take any questions you might have about it, but I'm happy to, to report that it is moving along on schedule.
Yeah, any comments or questions? If not, we'll move along to new business. Business information, Mr. Day?
Yes, the first item I have tonight is a series of donations. First, the Greenfield Central Junior High Art Department received $1,493 from the Riley Festival Association. This actually would include both the art department and the computer science department. This will be used to purchase art supplies and support the computer science program. The Greenfield Central Junior High Band Department received $1,185 from Erin Laney. This will be used to purchase musical supplies and support that program. The Greenfield Central Junior High received $3,800 from donors, detailed in the attached letter, and this will be used to support children who need funds to attend the Washington DC trip in the spring. The Greenfield Central Junior High is knocking out of the park this month and received another $4,750 from donors, detailed in the attached letter. This will be used to support the athletic department. Harris Elementary and Ms. Buckaloo received $506.85 from the Indiana Retired Teachers Association. This will be used to purchase a xylophone. And Harris Elementary received $790.10 from an anonymous donor, and they asked it to use to support teachers by purchasing the books that they needed from the book fair. I asked the school board to approve the grants and invasions as presented. The amount of these opportunities is $12,524.95.
Yes, can I get a motion to approve the donations as presented? And the amount, I do not choose it, $12,524.95.
I move that we accept the donations as outlined.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
The second item I have in business information, to C-1A, is asking the board to approve the resolutions as presented for the 2024 Indiana Bomb Bank Fuel Budgeting Program. And as you remember, as we spoke about earlier, we entered this program for the first time last year. So far this year, we've received one payment, where we had one month where the settlement was outside the collar. Overall, it's a, it's a relatively revenue-neutral program, but we believe it's good moving forward, just given the volatility that's happening in the Middle East right now, the potential changes in the economy, particularly as that, as that affects gas prices. I'm happy to answer more questions. I can review the program again in more detail as you would like, but I asked that the board approve the resolutions attached. There's actually two of them within Exhibit A, which is the Qualified Entity Reunification Agreement. But I believe we can take both of those in the same motion.
If no comments or questions, can I get a motion to approve the resolutions as presented?
I move that we approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same. Thank you, Mr. Day. On to board policies recommendations, first reading, Dr. Olin.
Just have two of those for you this evening. One is policy F-225 on fundraising and crowdfunding. You'll notice there are very few changes in that. I mentioned GoFundMe. Just very few changes from what you would have adopted in 2021. Just a little bit more specificity compared to the one from two years ago. The second policy, H-250 School Library Material Removal Request Procedure. This is one that came out of recent legislation. We have had an internal policy for that in terms of, if there was ever a question about any materials that we have, this formalizes that with a policy. And beyond that, you'll notice we put a form in here, which would be a sample form that we would likely use as being recommended. I would certainly entertain any questions that you have about either policy. If you don't, I'll simply bring those back to you next month in that same version.
No questions or comments? Can we move to out-of-state field trips?
Okay, out-of-state field trips it is. I have just two of those for you. The, actually, did I miss something there? No, okay. Blue Fusion Coaches, Jennifer Johnson and Kaylee Bowman requesting permission to take the teams to the national event, which would be in Orlando, Florida in March. The other one would be Coach Holden requesting to take his team to Connersville, where they would stay the night. They've done that a couple of times where they have some late night matches or early morning. It just allows them to be a little bit more rested. So both of these are things we've done in the past. Both of the sponsors understand expectations for overnight out-of-state field trips. I have no concerns. If you have no questions, I'd recommend approving them.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the overnight field trips as presented?
Make a motion to approve these two trips as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. All right, on to as-needed business, other, I will send another question.
Thank you. I have an annual disclosure, comprehensive disclosure statement for Mrs. Close. Her husband's going to assist with the eighth grade boys' basketball team here, and she's required to file this. We'll file this with the State Board of Council, County Department of Labor, and State law. Thank you. Probably need to top.
Can I get a vote on that? Can I get a motion to approve as presented?
Make a motion to approve the conflict of interest for Mrs. Close as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Four zero there.
All right, now on to personal matters. Contract recommendations, resignations, leaves, and retirements.
Okay, I do have a leave of absence for Krista Brightenthal and Emily Dickerson, certified recommendation for Anna Scott, ECA recommendations for Austin Bain and Ty Chittum. If you turn to the second page, those do continue with Dustin Close, Austin Early, Katie Helgeson, Dwayne Canet. Dwayne Canet's on there twice. Noah Muller, Grant Pfeifer, and Kenny Thompson. I will note, we did make a change. Noah Muller is not a lay coach. He is one of our teachers, so we did change that from what you would have seen yesterday. My recommendation is that the board approve the personnel report as presented and that you allow us to hire as needed for the duration of this 2023-24 school year. Of course, we'll bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented and give permission to hire as needed for the remainder of the school year.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. On to.
Obstention, I think. Also afforded that abstention there, okay.
Dr. Olin, can I introduce one of our?
Thank you for not wanting to go on here.
Me again, hi guys. Anna Scott Sykes is here with us tonight. So she has jumped in the deep end, has been teaching first grade for us here at J.B. Stevens. Anna, proud to say she's a GC graduate. She spent some time over at Weston doing student teaching in kindergarten and has now joined us as a first grade teacher, and we are very excited to have her.
Welcome, welcome. Carey has one also.
I believe I had two, I'm not sure. Oh, wait, did they leave?
Yeah, they left.
They were here for JB and then they took off. I'm sorry, I have nobody, I'm sorry.
We'll move right along to administration contracts, Dr. Olin.
Okay, what did you have before you'd be my recommendations for the administrator contracts for the 2023-24 school year? And as we've typically done, we'd like to get our Classroom Teachers Association contracts settled before we address the admin contracts. Not really any surprises there for you. We've got a great team and love to have them on for, for another year with a little bit of a raise there.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the administrator contracts for the 2023-24 school year as presented?
I move that we approve the administrator contracts for 2023-24 school year as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. How do you unit coaching recommendation, first reading, Dr. Olin?
Yes, as we wrapped up a really fantastic fall season, we do have those recommendations for you, both from Mr. Manning and Mr. Evans from the junior high school. You see the reports they have for each of the coaches. This, the, the table's going to look a little bit different for you this year, that we have a few positions in there that you haven't typically seen in the past. That would be specifically the golf coaching positions, which would be now out of the bargaining unit. That's been a process to, to move that, as well as. Tennis, but I don't see tennis.
Tennis, we usually.
It's a spring.
Cover the spring.
Spring.
That's why I did.
So that's a first reading for you. Those would be at the rate that we established actually last year as we looked at the averages within the Hoosier Heritage Conference. So that's for our first reading, and if you have any questions about that, certainly would entertain those this evening, and I plan to bring that back next month if you have questions at that time.
Any questions, comments? We'll move right along. If we have nothing else. Future dates, regular scoreboard meeting Monday, December 11th, at seven o'clock here. Thanksgiving break, November 22nd through the 24th, or 24th. If we don't have any other comments or questions, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thanks, everyone.